And to do some sort of cost analysis, working with providers. I think Pete Plummer mentioned, you know, the provider community is willing to look at reasonable rate-setting strategies around what are the actual cost drivers of the service and to try to analyze that on a service-by-service basis rather than, you know, rather than trying to take a really broad brush 10% across a range of programs.
Is that a workload you could work with? You know, doing that takes a lot of work. Is that...
I think providers would be, I think providers, including Kids Peace, would be happy to, you know, would be happy to work with the department around rate-setting methodologies and cost analysis.
Sure. Thank you.
Representative Grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You very succinctly outlined three groups of folks that would be losers with these cuts. And when you talked about the support that you give to students in the schools, in the classrooms, and you talked about the student, what would happen if a student didn't have support or they deregulated. I was immediately back as a volunteer in my children's classroom, thinking about another group of children who might be losers here. Am I correct in suggesting that perhaps the rest of the children in those classrooms with a child that didn't have the support that they needed might also be losers in such a scenario?
No, I think that's, I think that's an excellent point. Those of us that have been in classroom settings where, you know, where a child was, you know, was acting out, know that, you know, the capability of a team that's in that room right now to, you know, help that child regain control really matters to other kids.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Next, Senator Reed.
Welcome to Appropriations. Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate it. And Representative Rattanam and other distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs, as well as Health and Human Services. I'm here to testify today against proposed cuts in children's non-health reimbursement rates and services. I want to thank you for slipping me in among your other folks who are testifying. I appreciate that. Just close your eyes and picture for a moment. Imagine a mother standing next to her 12-year-old daughter as the daughter announces that she's going to jump out a window. The window is two and a half stories up. The result will likely be a broken ankle or broken leg. Under most circumstances, this loving, responsible, frightened mother would insist that her daughter not jump out of the window. In this situation, however, the mother said, "Please, honey, go ahead and jump. That would be great." What could possibly cause an otherwise rational, protective mother to utter such a phrase? Because having a broken bone would at least immobilize the daughter and prevent some more dangerous alternatives, specifically stabbing herself with the kitchen knives, which she was attempting to do just minutes earlier. You see, the daughter was suffering from psychosis, a severe symptom of serious and persistent mental illness, where often voices command a normally reasonable person or child to behave in bizarre ways. The voices are often loud, threatening, and overpowering. Perhaps the daughter was trying to escape them by jumping out the window. Perhaps she wanted to die rather than endure the tortured commands of the voices. What happened here? How did we get here? Despite her parents' best efforts, they couldn't get an appointment with a child psychiatrist for several months. Everywhere they turned, their daughter was put on a waiting list. She had a life-threatening disease, and they could not get her treatment. This was not for lack of insurance. Rather, it was for the lack of service providers. The severe shortage of child psychiatrists and related providers in Maine left this family with nowhere to turn except the emergency room and the psychiatric hospital. Fast forward eight years. Good news: this young woman goes to a therapeutic high school, enjoys her internship at a local nursing home. She earns money, like a lot of young women, through babysitting and pet sitting, and serves on the caring committee in her synagogue, regularly bringing meals and visiting with families facing hard times. She's a gifted musician, and she often sells her own recordings to benefit disaster relief efforts. She started her own business creating and selling baby clothes. She'll graduate in June and join Maine's workforce, contributing to society in so many ways. That young woman is my daughter, and I was that mother. What happened to get us from there to here? In short, effective treatment, including both complex medical management, the emotional, social, and academic supports she needed. But Maine continues to endure a significant shortage in child psychiatry, both in the M.D.s who manage these complex medications, which are not actually prescribed for children, and every child is going through their own development, physical development, puberty development, and this is really a very, very fine art with a lot of trial and error, which you've probably heard already. So we need not only those M.D.s who can prescribe the medication, but also social workers and others who provide the necessary talk therapy and other supports that complement medication to effect stability. My daughter's primary care doctor not only couldn't offer any evaluation or treatment options in her practice, she couldn't even secure a referral to a specialist in a timely manner. Like so many families with children in the early stages of mental illness, we could not find appropriate evaluation and treatment until her diagnosis had progressed into multiple crises. We could not get outpatient care until she'd been hospitalized. Is this the way children with cancer, diabetes, or heart disease are treated? Since I've been quite open about my family's story, I've received calls from desperate parents in my community over the years. These parents and children are on the windowsill, I mentioned earlier, looking for help, and unable to find them. Maine needs more practitioners in child psychiatry, not fewer, and I'm not aware of any recruitment and retention strategy that deliberately pays the target labor market less in order to attract more people into the field. I want to end this story on a positive note. Throughout the years that my family has lived with child-onset, serious, and persistent mental illness, I immersed myself in research and education in this arena. There's really good news. All of the research, some of which started right here in Maine, indicates that early evaluation and early intervention in mental illness have tremendous long-term benefits. Like many other diseases, such as cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, early detection, treatment, and treatment can stem the progress of the illness, protect the brain from further damage, and maximize the brain's potential for healthy function. If we can solve this severe shortage of practitioners and implement better screening and detection programs, we stand to save millions of dollars in future care, helping children, teenagers, and young adults curb the progress of their illness, giving them a better chance for a functional, albeit supported, productive life like that of my daughter. Thank you for listening. I wish you all the best with the very, very difficult decisions you have to face.
Thank you very much, Senator Reed. Our questions get Representative Sam.
Thank you so much for sharing your story with us and talk about putting a base on the problem. That's really good. I had been thinking, I had heard from other constituents kind of expressing the same kind of situation, and, you know, just what are we going to do about our mental health system in Maine, whether we're talking substance abuse or severe mental illness, a early detection program? You know, I know there was your program that, that pilot study went so well and then don't fund it, you know, for ongoing, an ongoing program. But it seems to me that the good work that's being done by Speaker Pete right now in regards to his roundtables on aging and to identify how we can address that, our growing elder population and all of their needs, that we need to be doing the same kind of thing about our whole mental health system. I know Dr. French spoke to not having a strategic plan, a state plan, and I think, I think she was referring to something smaller, but it seems to me we need, we need a whole mental health strategic plan in the state. So you being a senator and part of the legislative body, I don't know if you would be interested, but I would be interested in seeing if we can get something like that going. So maybe, I don't know if I think it's a good idea.
I'm passionately interested in it, and I will give any amount of time I possibly can. I agree that, you know, when we close the large psychiatric hospitals, they were supposed to grow in place a community health system that never really took shape. And I've been on boards of health, mental health organizations. I sit on one now, of providers. They have, you know, shoestring budgets, between computer problems and DHHS from other administrations and now other priorities. You know, every administration comes in and it seems to me sort of tries to put their own stamp on the department and the system, and all the providers are sort of like left to try to guess if that's going to look like and get ahead of it and survive each change. So I agree that we need a really comprehensive plan, starting with childhood. You're actually, I'm going to be introducing a bill later in the session that looks at very young children who are being expelled from private daycare and preschool settings and not because the people who are trying to serve them don't want them around, but they just can't fulfill these kids' needs and set up some mechanisms for evaluation there. It's, to me, it's really, really, really all about early intervention, early treatment. And my daughter's 20 now. She's in that transition phase, which is really, really choppy water to navigate. It is for any 20-year-old, but with her severe illness, we're, you know, trying to find the right setup for her to work, to get support at work, and continue good talk therapy. You know, she's aging out of the child system, so she's going to have to grant to find new practitioners in the adult system. So, and I, I mean, I just have to add on that, you know, while this crisis was going on, this was my full-time job. I mean, for six years, it was my full-time job. So it's, it's really a challenge.
Thank you. Just to kind of follow up, I think that the other point that I wanted to make is because of the whole families, families home visiting program, I mean, all of this also goes back to prevention, you know, and we, ever since I've been here, it's just been so frustrating that we are willing to invest in more with putting people into jail, you know, like this current budget is going to put more people on substance abuse and buying people, selling drugs. I'm not saying that that's not important, but if we don't invest from work on for prevention, I just don't understand how we ever get control of this whole system. So when I'm thinking mental health, how would I include all of those preventative services as well?
I absolutely agree. And I remember when Sheriff, when Representative Dion was, he's my representative, and when he was sheriff, he said, you know, "I know we're the biggest psychiatric facility in Comer County," when he was the sheriff. So it's, you know, what used to happen in large hospitals is now happening in large jails. And it's morally reprehensible, but even more, it's really stupid. It's just, it's just not good use of money. So much of that money, if it were used for the front end, for treatment, intervention, early detection, and supports, you know, you wind up with a happy ending like I shared with you today, but it's, we have to radically change our way of thinking about it. And the PR program might be coming back. There's a funding application, and I'm going to be issuing a joint, hopefully, a resolution in support of that funding, which is a national one.
Senator, thank you so much.
It's my pleasure. Thank you for having me.
A pleasure to have you. Don Gorgo and then Amanda Davis. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Senator Hamper, Representative Rattanam, Senator Brekey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Standing Committees on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Health and Human Services. My name is Doug Orville. I'm the Executive Director for Child and Family Opportunities in Ellsworth. I also served as the Chair of the Maine Head Start Directors Association, representing the 11 non-tribal head start agencies across the state. And just to point out what's coming around, there's my testimony, there's a short little article attached to it, and then we've also got our most up-to-date, hot-off-the-presses annual, or annual Head Start Report for 2014 that has a lot of information contained in it. I also have the answer to a previous question in terms of how many eligible children currently not being served, I believe was the question. So at serving 30% of the eligible children from birth to five until they're eligible for kindergarten, that's just over 4,000 children. If you do the math, then the number of children from birth to five that are eligible for Head Start or Head Start that are not being served is right around 9,400. That's the population. So I talked about Head Start before. Head Start serves children from birth to five, children and families in the most vulnerable situation, living at or below poverty level. So we're working with children in very dire circumstances. Not just with children, but we also provide comprehensive services, which is health services, mental health services, nutrition services, a whole host of other services that go along with what we do with children in the classroom itself. And then in addition to that, we also deeply engage with their parents, their parents and families, recognizing that they are the most important teachers of their children because they're with them the vast majority of their time. And so we work with a wide variety of different types of interventions and interactions with children and families. The impacts we have, I think, are fairly well-known. Our primary focus is on children being ready for kindergarten. When they get to kindergarten, they're ready to go, they're ready to flourish and be right in their, their peers, and be successful in life beyond kindergarten. They also have increased educational achievement, improved health because of those comprehensive services, reduce chances that they will return to crime, would be the phrase, or negatively interact with the law enforcement system. It also improves parenting skills and practices on the part of the parents and families of the children that we're working with. I've mentioned comprehensive services before, and I just want to focus on a specific example that might illustrate that. From the headlines, you've heard about the measles outbreak in California, I believe, and what we've attached to my testimony is a small little article from an organization. Let's see if it's called 538.com, their website focusing on data analysis, and it's entitled, "Why California's Head Start Kids Are Better Protected From Measles." And the primary reason is because Head Start's comprehensive services and focus on health means that we talk with parents about the importance of immunizing your children. And so in Head, in California, 94% of the children in Head Start are immunized. And according to the research, if you've got a group of children that 92%, or any group that has 92% of that group immunized as a group, they're considered protected. And so the Head Start children in California would be considered protected because 94% of those children have been immunized. That's a direct result of what we often call comprehensive services, that focus on, on health as one of those comprehensive services. So I did want to point out that in the budget for before you, Head Start, as has been mentioned previously, is flat-funded both from the Fund for Healthy Maine as well as from the General Fund, and we appreciate that support and would encourage that continued support. And I would also finish by saying something I've mentioned before. Please think of early care and education as a system in Maine. It's not just Head Start, it's not just childcare, it's not just Maine families, it's all of those programs working together. Maine families is a strategic partner of many, if not most, of the Head Start agencies across the state, serving the youngest children. Early Head Start Maine families serving children that are the youngest in our state. So please consider early care and education as a system, and as Representative Gattin mentioned a little bit earlier in your decision-making, please place the priority on children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Reed. Always a pleasure to have you on the panel. Did you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed your representative.
I'm sorry, I have to ask this. Many years ago, I was the legislative liaison for the Maine Parent Teacher Association, and between Washington and Augusta, we talked a lot about Head Start. And I remember in those days, in the 90s and into 2000s, when everyone universally said that Head Start was the most effective government program ever devised. I mean, that was what was said on both sides of the aisle, in Congress and in the states. Lately, there's been this other thing that's come along that seems to question whether or not Head Start is in fact a help, an effective program. And I'd like to know if you could address, I mean, I know there was a study done, and somehow now it's cast a cloud over that. Could you address that, please? Because I think a lot of folks question that in their mind.
Sure. The, the study you're referring to is called the Head Start Impact Study, and it indicated, first of all, and most importantly, that the children that went through Head Start were in fact ready for kindergarten at a higher rate than their peers when they got to kindergarten. Then the study went beyond that and said, "Let's look at third grade." And what happens at third grade? Are the Head Start kids still ahead at third grade? And the answer was no. Head Start kids aren't still ahead in third grade. So then you heard the term "fade out." Oh, Head Start doesn't work. Well, that's not the case. It's more a case of catching up. The other children who were not at the same level as the Head Start children when they got to kindergarten basically caught up. And I think there's some, some reasonable explanation for that as you think about our K-12 system and what typically happens in kindergarten, classroom, first, second, third, and eighth grade. If you've got children that need more assistance, where does the teacher spend their time with the children that need more assistance? Because you're hoping to have all the children move together at the same rate. That's what we've put an emphasis on, is the group progressing together, they all finish one grade and go on to the next grade. So I would say it's not a case of Head Start fading out, it's a case of other children catching up. And so Head Start is satisfying, is primary goal, of those children being ready for kindergarten, which they would not have been had they not received the assistance that they receive coming from the sorts of backgrounds that they're coming from. Because the research also demonstrated that if they start out behind from those types of backgrounds, those children typically do not catch up. But the other children with many more resources have much more capability to catch up than the kids from, or challenging backgrounds. That's how I would explain it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Reed. Amanda Davis and then again, Plaza.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I may be a little nervous, it's my first night here, so if I get anybody, I apologize. Pass to Senator Hamper, Senator Brekey, Representative Rattanam, Representative Gattin, members of the Joint Standing Committee. I am Amanda Davis. I'm testifying in opposition to the cuts being closed in the budget, cutting 10% from Section 28 treatment services. I'm speaking about my son and the community in which we live in. I believe I saw someone just passing out another letter that was hanging, and I actually brought back one of the parent in our community. As a parent who works full-time with a son diagnosed with autism at the age of four, I could've been here years or days on his struggles and successes. However, I only have three minutes. Tyler has had the fortunate benefit of working with several behavioral health professionals, also known as BHPs, since he was six. He's now 11. We have learned from personal experience that early and consistent intervention is vital for success. At one point, Tyler was receiving 25 hours of support each week. Due to cuts already made to this service, he is only receiving 15 hours now. We have had to adjust from losing 10 hours per week. However, we are grateful for the 15 hours that we do get. Equally important to the number of support hours is the quality of that intervention. The quality of services is greatly affected when there is regular staff turnover resulting in lack of consistency. Tyler, for example, has worked with at least 13 different BHPs. Has this impacted the cost-benefit of services? I would say from firsthand experience it has. It says additionally, a rate reduction of 10% will buy its very nature, result in further erosion in the quality as well as quantity of services. As the old saying goes, don't be penny wise and pound foolish. We can envision the day when Tyler will be independent because he has had the right skills to do so. The alternative, yet not receive these services, could continue receiving them, would be an adult life in a residential facility costing tax payments potentially here in spite of costs of the products. I have recently learned that there are 15 pre-approved children and have been waiting for services staffing for between 30 to 20 to 298 days. The primary challenge faced by agencies such as the one supporting Tyler is finding qualified staff who are able to work at such a low wage with benefits. In fact, most, if not all, BHPs are part-time, subsidizing a full-time job. A 10% cut would only exacerbate an already strained situation. I'd like to point out that Tyler was four when he was diagnosed. He started receiving services when he was six. Quick math tells me that was two years that he lost on intervention to make. Therefore, this potential cut of 10% to Section 28 is very important, important enough for me to take a day off from work to be here in person, rather than hoping someone else buys back for my son. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Representative Jones.
Thanks very much for being here. Certainly, as a parent, I totally, totally get where you're coming from. The question I have is really, I don't, can you just talk a little bit about sort of what a typical, what these supports look like? What are they exactly? I understand it's home visiting or, or class support. What do those look like?
For my son in particular, he has a very hard time processing different sensory, sensibility things. Things will set him off very easily, but because of the services that he's gotten, things have gotten better, such as when he was a lot younger, he would come into a room and he would flip the lights on and off to adjust to where it was comfortable for him. Or if the room felt too overwhelming, he would find him crouched under a desk as far back in one corner, I think we get. Now, because of the services he's been getting, the individuals that have worked with him have worked with on Tyler, you know, pull out my finger if, if you're not comfortable in a room, we'll talk about it. Or if you're ready to leave or something's overwhelming to you, you know, these are the cues for you to give me because he doesn't have good eye contact. And so the other problem that comes along with all that is he would stay at home 24/7 if you allowed him. He's a typical child in some instances of, I don't want to listen to him on the pad. So when we're out in a parking lot and there's a car coming, and your son just got out a car and he's ready to bolt, he doesn't understand parking lot safety. And when mom's like, "Stop," that's just mom yelling at me. But if I have a BHP with me saying, "Okay, Tyler, before you unbuckle your seatbelt, tell me what you're going to do. You're going to unbuckle your seatbelt, you're going to exit the vehicle, and you're going to wait for me by your door. You're not going to take off, right? Right?" Now, if mom says that to Tyler, that's not what's going to happen. He's got whatever on his mind was waiting for in the store, or whatever it may be, because it's just mom lecturing him. And I really think the BHPs build such a strong bond with these children, and they really build a connection on how to work with them and understand them, and the children really do connect and listen to them. However, because of the strength that's already in the system that's here, like I said, he's had over 13 BHPs. That's a lot of people to come in and out of a young child's life and try to keep always rebuilding that bond. I mean, that's a, that's just the I mean, that's a, that's the struggle we deal with all the time. And as a parent, that's hard too, because you're, you're putting trust and you're relying on someone to take care of your child that many different times.
Thank you very much. I hope to put a face to whatever else gives me a picture of what's happening. Thank you.
Representative Hamper.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing your story. Since you've seen the turnover, can you give us a sense of what the turnover is about? 13 people you've seen come and go?
Well, a lot of them are either young and they're trying to find their way, so they're not quite sure if that's the profession they want to be in or not. Or it may be, they're, quite a few of them are, are either full-time teachers or already behavioral helpers in a school system, so they're subsidizing outside school hours, after school, working with children with autism and other disorders. And eventually, I think they just get marked out, you know, because they're working so much, I mean, against me. And then the other factor is just you'll get a really great staff and you get connected with them and they're building that bond with your kid, but they're only part-time. And now they just found that full-time job somewhere else, so they get their notice and off they go.
Stevens, thank you so much for being here and cheering you on, Tyler.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Your testimony was wonderful. And please let more of you ever know that we appreciate, that was a word, we appreciate her testimony.
I, I tell that story, and I didn't think it was going to hit me as hard as it did.
But you did a great job, and it's, we're, we're behind you.
Aw, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here today.
Ann Ratcliffe, and then Peter Lindsay.
Do moms always cry?
I don't want to cry. Thank you for my cry.
It's absolutely fine.
Thanks for having me. Ann Ratcliffe, I appear to be a parent of a child who receives Section 28 services to speak about the proposed 10% budget cut. And so I have a little spiel here, but I do encourage all of you to take some questions. You know, you did a great job with Amanda, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well. I'm not particularly shy and I don't have anything that I wouldn't share with you. So I live in Southwest Harbor with my husband and two kids. We have a 15-year-old typically developing sophomore at MBIA High School, and we have a 12-year-old daughter that goes to Comatic Elementary School in their life skills program. Our daughter Quinn has been receiving Section 28 services for over five years, so quite a while. She was born with a genetic disorder called tuberosclerosis. She is cognitively impaired, developmentally delayed, non-verbal, and she's had seizures almost every day since she was about three months old. She's awesome though, so those are just the, that's just the process. So my goal for both my kids is the same. You know, I hope they both have the care and support that they need to grow and learn and move forward in the world, ready to be good people, contributing members of their family and their communities, and to be able to enjoy life and with freedom, both my kids equally. Section 28 services help Quinn and many others to use the program to reach goals similar to those. Last year, Quinn's teacher said, Quinn was like the woman on the TV show Downton Abbey, and we were all like her lady waiting. Quinn will just stand there, she'll just look at you like, "Get me dressed, get my shoes, get my food, feed me." She's, she's pretty far on the spectrum of neediness. Section 28 will do and make a huge difference in Quinn's life to making her more independent and kids like her. It's, it's hard to describe the impact that they have on a daily basis for our family life. I work outside the home, my husband works outside the home. We want to have supportive, loving relationships with both of our children. I can't come home and beat Quinn up without pulling up her collar. You know, and she will stand down and, she'll stand there for 20 minutes. And the BHPs come in and they meet her and they have patience and they have the skills and they move her forward. They teach her what she needs to know in all aspects of her life, from dressing to self-care, to feeding, to safety, like Amanda talked about, you know, knowing when a stop sign is, being able to go out in public and not, you know, just randomly bump into all the strangers that she sees or anything like that. It, it's, it's, it has a huge impact on the rest of us in our home. You know, it's us, it's not childcare, but it's like Amanda said, you can't just leave these kids to anybody. People who work with them have to be trained, they have to know how to work with them, they have to know how to, you know, respectfully take care of them and teach them. And the BHPs do that, and for $8.50 to $11.00 an hour. So when you ask about why there's so much turnover and, and the impact of these cuts, you know, who do, who comes in the door? Who takes a job for $8.50 now? Somebody transitioning and somebody maybe thinking of a career, and they start working with these kids who are wonderful kids, but like they burn out, they get tired. It's a, it's a tough call. All the answers aren't going to be solved with this 10%, but it's, seeing the 10% is just part of the erosion of these programs. And we're talking about mental health, you know, pay networking, it's the same argument in this country that we had for a long time. You pay in early pension, early intervention, or you pay in jails and hospitals, you know, so that's kind of my thing. I don't have any other specific things to say, but I am happy to answer any questions and absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good.
Seeing no questions. And thanks again.
Thank you.
Peter Lindsay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, Senator Brekey, Representative Gattin, and members of the Joint Committee. My name's Peter Lindsay. And I'm here today representing the United Way of Midcoast Maine, and I, both our Board of Directors, who are listed on the handout that's coming around you, as well as the volunteers to serve on our Success by States Early Childhood Council. And I'm going back to the issue of home visiting care, we referred to bouncing back and forth between a couple of issues, but our United Way strongly supports important investments in early care and education, primarily to prevent costly problems later in life and to help Maine families and Maine economics future. We support, as others have said here before, a comprehensive early care and education system that includes Maine families, home visiting services, but also includes Head Start and early Head Start.